All right, good evening, everybody. Clerk Reed, could you please take the role?
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Here.
All right, great.
Alderman Fisk.
And Alderman Fisk. And I know Alderman Nguyen just finished up a very long meeting, so she is on her way. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your stamina and being here at 10:45 at night as we start the Monday, October 9, 2017 Evanston City Council. There are a couple of quick announcements. First off, I just wanted to thank our interfaith community here. This evening, there was a service of lament and hope at Second Baptist Church for the Las Vegas mass shooting, which occurred a week ago. And so I really appreciate that we have a strong interfaith community here in Evanston to organize for that. So, thank you. Secondly, we had a proclamation tonight that we did in my office for YAMO, ETHS's production theater, that has been around for 60 years. So, quite a spectacular amount of time. One of our famous ETHS grads, Jessica Mueller, will actually be in the performance this year, coming up next Sunday, October 15, at 1:30 at ETHS. So, congratulations to YAMO. I wanted to recognize someone here in this audience, and I hope that I have my... apologize for this. I do have it. I wanted to recognize somebody in this audience. And I wanted to recognize them tonight because tonight I have up for appointment 15 members of the Climate Action Work Group, which is really, really exciting. And there's lots of things in this community that start from the ground up. They actually don't start right up here at City Council, and they start with people like many of yourselves that are in this room. And tonight, we have one of those people, and it's Steve Perkins. I don't know if you would mind standing up, Steve. I know you're in the back. And I'd like... (applause). I'd like to stay standing for a second, Steve, if you don't mind. I'd like to recognize, you know, a community leader in Steve Perkins, who's played a significant, significant role in our fight against climate change from our earliest days. Seventeen years ago, Steve convened the Network for Evanston's Future, okay, long before any of these groups that we're hearing right now, right? An umbrella organization working on various aspects of sustainability and raising community awareness on climate change. He had a vision that Evanston could make a real difference in the fight against climate change, and he prodded the city council at that time to sign the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement. And this is back in 2006. And if you're at the recent climate workshop, we talked about all the different agreements and compacts that were part of. But remember, it started way back, way back when, 11 years ago, and Steve taking that initiative. He then proposed a city-community collaboration to develop a plan to achieve the emissions-reduction targets called for in the agreement. This unique partnership of dozens of citizen and city staff produced our very first Climate Action Plan, which was back in 2008. He next pulled together a number of citizens who had helped develop the Climate Action Plan to form Citizens Greener Evanston and work with the city to implement that plan. Thanks to this ongoing citizen partnership, Evanston is one of the very few communities in the country to have achieved the emissions-reduction goal set out in the Climate Protection Agreement. When it became clear that Evanston would meet the target's first Climate Action Plan, Steve was part of a small group who worked on Evanston Sustainability Coordinator to develop our second Climate Action Plan, the Liveability Plan. As we close in on the target that we set in that second plan and begin to work on our next plan, we want to thank you, Steve, for all that you have done to make Evanston a true, true leader in sustainability. Thank you. Thank you. Steve has retired. He has retired from his position as a Senior Vice President at the Center for Neighborhood Technology, and sadly, but happily for your family, will be moving to his farm in Indiana next year. So, thank you for everything you've done to make this community what it is in terms of climate change, Steve. We appreciate it. (applause). All right. Lastly, if you have been tied up in city council meetings and committee meetings all day, the Chicago Cubs won the third game. How about that? So, how about that? So, they're up 2-1 against the Nationals, Game Four, if you're interested, tomorrow, 4:30, 8:00 p.m., and hopefully, the Cubs can clinch it. So, that wraps up my announcements. Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
I guess I shouldn't ask about the Bears, but I will. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Open House Evanston, an event at Open House Chicago, well, soon to be called Open House Evanston, I would think, is an event that we have been part of over the last couple of years, and it's really a sleeping giant. And we really wanted to have an opportunity to briefly talk a little bit about Evanston's involvement. Annie Cokely, the Executive Director of Downtown Evanston, Lisa Del Antonio, so many titles. I'm not sure which hat she's wearing tonight, but I'm sure she will tell us. And they're just going to talk real briefly about Open House Chicago and really the impacts that it's having in Evanston and where people can go this weekend. So, ladies, good evening.
Thank you. I will go over this rather briefly, but it is pretty exciting, as the city manager suggested. Three years ago, Evanston became the first community outside of Chicago proper to be part of this weekend-long event that opens sites that are normally not open to the public for the weekend. There are over 200 sites in this event throughout Chicago, and now in Evanston, and now in Oak Park as well. Last year, Evanston was the third most visited community out of 20, bringing about 21,000 people to Evanston for this weekend-long event, which is really a great accomplishment in three years to be able to do that. We have 17 sites in the North Shore this year. 15 are in Evanston. One is the Bahai Temple, and the other one is in Skokie at the Skokie-Swift Station. Downtown Evanston and the Convention and Visitors Bureau puts together a brochure, and we also purchase a significant amount of advertising to bring people that are coming here to our community or commercial districts. So, we print 10,000 brochures to be at these individual sites. They're handed out. We hope people will come and shop and eat in our restaurants. And then, very wisely, Lisa put together an event to also capture the targeted 21,000 people that will be coming here.
Can you go to the next slide?
Sorry.
Hello, everybody. So, as you know, or many of you know, the hat I'm wearing right now is Evanston Made, which is a community arts initiative that happens in the month of June. The mission is to help artists and creatives engage with the general public. So, in June, typically, we have a month-long art exhibit and studio tours where artists open up their studios and free open to the public. People can go check out what they have. Gina, very smartly, of the North Shore CVB, said, "Hey, why don't you capture some of the 21,000 humans who are coming to town that day?" So, we reactivated the Evanston Made map. There will be 1,000 of these printed through five locations that invite some artists to open up their studios. There's also a wonderful installation that's happening in nine yards across West Evanston called Terrain Biennial. There's also five new murals that have gone up very recently in Evanston. All of those are on the map. If I can approach the bench and give you a stack of stickers that you may be passed to your left. And if you Google Evanston Made, you'll learn all about this initiative.
And then, my last shameless pitch is for Downtown Evanston's Oktoberfest, which is this Sunday, from 1:00 to 6:00 at the Farmer's Market parking lot. This is a fundraiser for Downtown Evanston. Last year, we were able to get or capture 400 walk-ups, which we believe were because the Evanston or the Open House Chicago event was happening. So, we went from 500 people to 900 people last year, and we hope for even more and for no rain, although we do have a ton. So, come out even if it does rain. That's it.
And thanks to both of you for your leadership. It's really a tremendous event, and I think, you know, we've talked a little bit about collaboratives. You know, there were logos up on the screen. There are lots of organizations involved. Downtown Evanston, the Chamber of the CVB, the Evanston Arts Council...
Northwestern.
Northwestern. So, again, we talk about leveraging all these great resources in Evanston. This is just one of those excellent examples. So, thank you both. And then, lastly, another exciting event, and as I think we know, these things always seem to get bunched up together, is an event on Saturday that the city is once again cosponsoring with the United Way, the United Way Evanston Day of Caring. And so, this is an opportunity where residents have an opportunity to do volunteer work at eight nonprofit agencies located throughout Evanston. People may still register if they're interested and go to volunteerevanston.org until Thursday. So, this is Saturday, October 14, from 9:00 to noon, and it's really an opportunity for people who maybe don't have time to have regular volunteer opportunities but are looking for something to do during the course of the morning to help an Evanston agency. This is a great opportunity to do that. So, that's this coming Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my public announcements.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
Yes. I just want to introduce Eduardo Gomez, who is our new permanent deputy clerk. I interviewed Eduardo in August, I believe, a while ago, and Eduardo very much impressed me. Eduardo, if you want to come and just say hello and introduce yourself to the council, Eduardo is bilingual, which we are extremely happy to have in the office and across from the collectors. So, if you happen to need translation, you can pop over to the Clerk's office. And Eneth will need to get Eduardo one of those little buttons that says Yo hablo español, I believe. I think we have those around the city somewhere, yeah. In fact, you're wearing one right now, I think.
Excellent. Yeah. I just wanted to take this opportunity to first and foremost thank the city for being the first institution in giving me the opportunity to showcase my skills and believing in my potential. So, I am extremely grateful for that, and I am grateful for this current role that I've been given, and I will do my best to uphold the duties and responsibilities to both the city and the residents we represent. Para los hispanohablantes, les quiero dejar saber que nuestra oficina está aquí para servirles con cualquier pregunta o dudas que tengan. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. It's been... The struggle that the Clerk's office has had is getting someone like Eduardo, and we're glad to have him here now after about four months of working to do that. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Clerk Reed, and welcome. Welcome, Eduardo. It's good to have you here. All right. Next up on our agenda is public comment. You guys know this spiel that I give every time. I'll just add, it's 10:45 at night, so I think we've got about 15 people signed up for public comment. So, the way our comment works, we get a 45-minute period. If we reduce and get our public comment done before 45 minutes, there's lots of cheering that goes on from the dais up here and also from other people in the audience. So, if what you're about to say has already been said, you can get up and say, "Hey, I'm going to pass. It's already been said." But please keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and we'll begin public comment. I will give you a little tick if you're getting close to three minutes so we can wrap it up. We've got Rachel Human, then Alejandra Ebenez, and then Edwar Rivera. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad I'm not saying good morning. I bet you are, too.
We'll see how good we do in public comment.
On behalf of the Evanston Welcoming Coalition, and I'm going to read the so-ghosts quickly and I don't forget, I want to thank Mayor Hagerty and your council members and Chief Eddington for considering the removal of Evanston... from Evanston's welcoming ordinance of four carve-outs. And I'm not going to explain what carve-outs are, but I'm going to tell you what they do and why we so badly needed to have them taken out. Carve-outs violate constitutionally guaranteed due process. That's the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution. And because of this violation, they expose our city to litigation that the city of Chicago is already fighting, aside from the fact that the people who are subject to it do not receive due process. So, the elimination of these carve-outs is an important step, and we're very thankful to the legal department for admitting them from the revision of our welcoming ordinance, the original welcoming ordinance that was passed a while ago. However, our immigration lawyer, who was one of those who contributed to the Trust Act that Governor Ronner signed very recently, has urged that we add three critical words to the revision, and those words are "signed by a judge" to a phrase in Section D that reads "provides a valid, enforceable federal warrant." And then, to that, we would add "signed by a judge." And is this getting across clearly? Okay. Okay. The importance of that is that those three words refer to what's called a judicial warrant. And the judicial warrant is the only kind of warrant that can legally allow ICE to pick someone up, to apprehend someone. If they come with another kind of warrant and they're allowed to apprehend someone, we are in violation of due process by allowing that to happen. This happens all the time with ICE. They rarely come with a judicial warrant, and they just pick people up, and people don't know what to look for. And now, there aren't even any warrants being shown. People are just picked up and put through the process immediately.
Rachel, we just have a few more seconds.
Okay. Thank you. Without those three words, our revision fails to ensure protection equivalent to that provided by the Illinois Trust Act. So, again, we thank you for your efforts thus far toward making Evanston's welcoming ordinance one of the strongest in the country. We hope that we can take this to the finish line with the addition of those three key words, "signed by a judge." Thank you all.
Great. Thank you.
That was D1. Was that the part you're talking about?
D, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Yeah. Next up, Alejandra, and then we've got Edwar Rivera, and then Reverend Michael Neighbors.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and members of city council. My name is Alejandro Váñez. I reside at 1400 Kirk Street. I've come to support and thank members of this body for listening to the Evanston Welcoming Coalition, of which I am a member. We and allies, neighbors, have called for an updated welcoming city ordinance that could reflect our shared values and commitments to providing due process to all those that call Evanston home, including our fellow immigrant families. I want to give an extra special thanks to my neighbor and friend, Cecily Fleming, who is not my alderperson, for her support in our learning of the process and moving this process along. I wanted to share with you real quickly my story. I arrived to Evanston with my parents and siblings in 1988. My family fled the military dictatorship of Chile in the late '70s, and by the time we got to Evanston, we had lived as undocumented immigrants for over a decade. Luckily, because of federal immigration reform, I had an opportunity to become a naturalized citizen. That happened about a year after graduating from ETHS. I had an opportunity to be legalized. I went on to college, worked for the Illinois House of Representatives in the Illinois Senate, and actually had a great opportunity in career. My husband and three sons moved back to Evanston. He now sits on the District 65 School Board, sends his regards. I think he's still in his meeting as we speak. I just want to show that becoming a legal, permanent resident and citizen had a tremendous impact on my life, as you can imagine. That is not an opportunity available to millions of undocumented immigrants that call the U.S. home. With this new federal administration, millions of families are now vulnerable to detention and deportation. I commend you and thank you for making our welcoming city ordinance the best it could be. Ask you that you support the small tweak in the legal language that Rachel has spoken to. I look forward to making this an actionable ordinance. Give it life. Get it moving. Would love to brainstorm with you on how we can do that. But I also want to let you know that we hope to extend this welcoming status to our fellow Black residents, because we will not tolerate racial profiling or discrimination of any individual in our community. I have seen too many times how immigrants are racially profiled, and I need to be my brother's keeper, my sister's keeper. I want to look forward to the day where I don't have to fear for the safety of my brown sons or their Black and Brown peers. Let's work to make that a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I actually will submit to you the written testimony of Edwar Rivera. He is an Evanston resident, ETHS grad at Oakton Community College. He and his family have what's called TPS status, Temporary Protective Status. It's similar to DACA. That program is about to be ended by the president, and he and his family are likely to be deported. And he wanted to share his testimony. So, he had to leave, and he's left.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. You can bring it up to the clerk here. Terrific. Thank you, Alejandra. Okay. So, then, the next speaker is Reverend Michael Neighbors, then Regina Santa Anna, and then Paul Klitsky.
The pastor had to leave.
Let's see. So, the pastor had to leave. Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Regina Santana. I'm going to be brief, because most of what I had to say, they already said about the legislation. I am an immigrant from Brazil. I've been in the U.S. for 20 years. I'm a member of this community. I sit on two boards. I like to think of myself as this tree who has roots, very strong roots, in Brazil, but I bear my fruits in this country through my work, my dedication, my volunteer work. I would like, as a proud immigrant from Brazil, to invite you to co-create our beloved community. Our safety, regardless of our status and the documentation that one might possess, is only real and tangible when the most vulnerable amongst us can feel safe. Let us be the lighthouse to this nation. We have here the goodwill in Evanston. Let's make Evanston's welcoming ordinance the strongest in the country. Let's amend it, create that specific language that make it strong. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Regina. Paul Klitsky, and then we've got Leslie Williams, and then Don Scholnberger.
Hello. My name is Paul Klitsky, and I'm the general manager of Nature's Perspective Landscaping, located here in the beautiful Second Ward of Evanston. Again, I really appreciate all the amazing aldermen here tonight and hearing me out. I'm here tonight to encourage supporting the welcoming city ordinance. You know, everything that's been said previously, I totally agree with. My family started Nature's Perspective here in Evanston 38 years ago, and people sometimes ask me, "What is the most important part of our business?" And I easily respond to them, "It's our employees." Truly, you know, my company would be nothing without my employees. They are the only thing that separates us from our competition. My employees are the keystone of our organization and have been the only reason why our company is as successful as it currently is. We currently have 53 employees, and 90% of my workforce is of Latino or Hispanic heritage. Since November of last year, a few of my employees have been very frightened for some of their family and friends. Some of them are actually Evanston residents that are very concerned. You know, since the current administration and the rhetoric that's coming from our White House is really negative, and, you know, we believe that the only way to create some stability and safety for our community is to pass the welcoming ordinance with the amendments that were requested previously. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paul. Okay. Next up is Leslie Williams.
Greetings to the city council and to Clerk Reed and to the city manager. Longtime listener, first-time caller. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Open Communities Justice Team about the Equity and Empowerment Commission. Open Communities includes representatives from several local organizations that work for civil rights and advocacy, and we've been calling for a Citizens Equity Advisory Committee to work with the Equity and Empowerment Coordinators since the position was created. We were delighted to hear that the city plans to create an Equity and Empowerment Commission, but we have some questions about the language and the content. And when dealing with equity, language matters. First, we feel that the ordinance, as written, downplays the urgency of addressing racial equity. The commission membership requirements call for one of the nine members to be an expert or advocate for people with disabilities, which is fine, but we think it's interesting that it does not specify members with experience in advocating for racial equity. Merely stating that the commission must reflect community demographics does not mean that those chosen will be experienced advocates for marginalized communities, particularly Latinos and African-Americans. We believe it muddies the water to talk about diversity and inclusion. We all value diversity, but diversity without specific metrics that will include equity and that will address outcomes and... outcomes and... sorry, I lost my place here. The crucial need is equity and opportunities, resources, and outcomes. Inclusion can be merely faces at the table without power or a voice. The need is not merely for a commission to guide and assist, but to remove explicit and implicit policies that obstruct equity and to implement an equity lens in all city departments. Finally, the ordinance calls for only three of the nine commission members to be experienced in social justice advocacy. We ask that in addition to the one alderman, that all members be experienced in social justice advocacy, and that they should come from local organizations involved in equity work, such as the YWCA, Opel, the Evanston Collective, the Center for Neighborhood Protection, Latino Resources, Open Communities, and the NAACP. We would also strongly suggest that the commission work with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which is the leading national authority on implementing equity in municipal governments, and has led to substantial changes in equity metrics for St. Paul, Seattle, Madison, and other cities. We know that you all want the commission to be effective, and we respectfully recommend putting a hold on this ordinance until it can be strengthened and its goals clarified. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. Okay. I think Don Scholnberger left. Okay. Mr. Green, we got Rodney Green, and then it looks like James Gendon. Again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing people's names, and then Janad Rizki.
My name is Rodney Green, and I want to say good evening to Mayor Hagerty, city clerk, alderman, and city manager. I'm here today to talk on two items on your agenda for the day. First, SP2. I spoke to it once before, and I still go against having the clerk or the council allocating money to hire a personal lawyer to advise the clerk in his duties according to his office. If this was corporate America, those who apply for a job, who do not follow up on their... who do research on what they need to do, corporate America fires them. The city clerk in his time during his campaign also talked about how he knew what the clerk's office could do. He talked about the clerk is the only full-time elected official who has not fulfilled any full-time position in an office since his election five months ago. This is the fifth month. There is also discrepancies in things that he has done that I think that the council should not allow to allocate money. Now, if there's someone to train him, then they should have done it prior to this position in the job. Second thing I want to talk about is 1829 Simpson. Both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission on September 25th both sent to the council a denial of that proposed project for that area. Now, I know that the council has a right to veto it or override it, but if you have people on a committee who gives opinions to the council, and the council doesn't listen to that committee, why should that committee be enforced? Why should you not listen to the people who are responding? And I think I last asked for a list of the emails that Alderman Ruth said that she received. I want to find out who these people are, who says she sees that supports this, and then the reason why. If the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission went against it, why should the council approve it? Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Okay. Janad Rizki... Excuse me. Do we have... Yeah. Excuse me. Is it James?
My name is James Gendon. Quite frankly, I had no intention of coming to this council meeting, but I was given an email from a friend advising me of the city clerk's request for an authorization and budget allocation for hiring a special legal counsel. Quite frankly, I was flabbergasted by this request. In essence, it's asking for the expenditure... an open-ended expenditure of public funds to hire an expensive outside counsel to teach the city clerk what the duties and... the duties and responsibilities of his job are. This is not a proper expenditure of public funds. We had an election earlier this year. The city clerk presented himself to the public as somebody who had the ability, knowledge, and skills to do the job. He has a substantial public salary, which in fact was augmented by the council last year, and if he now feels that it's necessary for somebody to tutor him in what the responsibilities and duties of his job are, that's an expenditure that should be made out of his private funds, not out of public funds in a time of financial scarcity.
Thank you, James. Janad Rizki, and then we have Ray Freeman, and then Madeline Decray.
I'm going to speak to various issues here. The first, the township was dissolved not so long ago, and I see a pattern here of possibly basically weakening the clerk's office. To me, it's not about Ms. Devon Reed or former city clerks, which I've known three or four. It's about keeping the office intact. And I don't trust -- basically, it seems that the power of the office is slowly being diminished, and that's not really an acceptable thing. Mr. Bobkowitz has a habit of taking things, and that's what he's done his entire career, it looks like. He just basically disbanded the township and took the money. Our public television station was basically gutted by him, and some other things, a lot of other things, unfortunately. And we're in a $6 million budget hole here. So, I'm not -- I'm against our city clerk, and I'm not -- as you say, it's not about Don Reed, it's about the office being protected, because we need public, basically something independent of the city. We don't need the law department running things. The city clerk does have a role, so that's important to me. And I think we have a city manager that has way too much money on a budget. No city manager, I recall, had an $8 million budget here. I think this budget needs to be scrutinized, and possibly, Mr. Bobkowitz should have a much smaller budget to manage, and he should manage the whole city. So, if we want to talk about Ms. Devon Reed, we need to look at Mr. Bobkowitz, too, and his performance there. I'm very concerned, as I stated in another meeting here tonight, that this -- because we have a budget crisis, the city council will want to start selling things. And you know, I'm -- we're not -- I'm against selling any public assets such as parks and public buildings and things. Yes, we can sell things. You know, if you've got old vehicles, that's fine, sell them, but you know, not sell our parks. It's not acceptable. And I sort of listened to this thing, "Open House Chicago," and it would have been nice to have Harley Clark open, by the way. I think that's been sabotaged for quite some time here through a lot of misinformation. We talk about misinformation, you know, at PND tonight. The citizens are giving out misinformation. Well, quite honestly, a lot of staff memos I've read over the years here have been a lot of misinformation, a lot of mistakes, and a lot of problems. And when this has been pointed out, nobody comes back and basically says anything. I want to say some years ago, I basically noted a problem in an excavation watching city employees work, and I took it to the committee at the time. And after I explained it all, Alderman Baptiste walked up to me and thanked me that I was basically informing them of a problem. With the current city, I'm not convinced that would be the case.
About 15 more seconds.
All right. Because you know, because I think here, everything is to sort of hide what's going on. And as we move forward, the budget, I'm sure, will be more interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, Janad. Madeline Decray. Let's get Ray Freeman, I think, is left. I don't see Ray out there. And then we've got Betty Esther, and then Irv, although I think Irv left.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Everyone at home. I'm going to be real brief. Listen carefully. I have two things to talk about, about the restaurant and the sanctuary city. Hopefully, I'll get to that, because I've been trying to get to that ever since two Human Services meetings again. Anyway, I will be brief and speak with simplistic word and sincerity in my heart. I spoke to a couple of city aldermen, left phone messages. One was full. One alderman I did not get to, because I know this alderman was still and is stale in belief. I asked earlier that I still, and I'm still asking the alderman not to vote for the change of rezoning, 1829 Simpson Street, from R3 to B1. First of all, I ask again for fairness. What is fairness to you, to us, in the Fifth Ward? I believe that with all my heart and soul, that many of us have loved this Twigs Park. In the early '60s I came here, my children have had -- spent many times there, Easter egg hunts, picnics, et cetera. Some of us have asked for a fence for many, many years there. Do we have a fence there for the children with the tots? No, I do not think so. That street is busy. Simpson Street is busy. Take a look. Drive by there. There's a tot playground there. We have been waiting for a sign for Butler and Twigs Park since the bridge was built, even before. We have yet to see it. No money. We wanted a West Side Library on that street, Simpson. We have yet to see it, but we see Robert Crown with a library over there, but not in the Fifth Ward. What is the problem here? Discrimination? I believe so. Education is very important in the Fifth Ward. We need our library there. That would be a good place for it. Parking, garbage issues, animals crawling from the canal banks? Check it out sometime. They come up. Also, I think Mr. Green mentioned about the committees that went for this. Why didn't the aldermen sort of -- did you not read your report? Do we need a committee if you are going to come and change your whole way of looking at things? Let's get rid of it.
Madeline, we have about 10 more seconds.
Thank you. Okay, the soul food issue. I have to apologize for the outburst, okay? I apologize for that. I lost my cool. But I believe in my park. I believe in the city with the park, okay? And I believe soul food do not belong to just African Americans and black folks. Where I come from, soul food means when you put your foot in it, when you can cook, whether it's Italian, Irish, Italian, Belize, whatever. That means you can cook soul food, okay? Now, let me just say this real quick.
Madeline, I've been generous with the time. I need you to really wrap it up. 10 seconds.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. I will leave some people with this to think about. We are going down a straight road here in the Fifth Ward. There's two lanes. Both of us going the same distance, okay? Now, I would hope that those two lanes at the end of the destination will come together. I'm waiting for that.
Thank you.
I want to be sincere. I am truly waiting for that. Fifth Ward alderman.
Thank you, Madeline.
Thank you.
All right.
And I will speak again on the sanctuary.
On sanctuary, next time.
That is not right. Next time. Profiling black folks here, we need a sanctuary for that. I'll finish up next.
All right. Okay, is Betty Esther? Oh, Ray, you're here. Okay. If you'd like to come up, and then we've got Betty Esther, and I think Irv has left.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and city council. It's great to see so many people come out to speak on these projects that they are so passionate about. We are still waiting for city council to please answer our questions about zoning, R5 explanation, your affordable housing ordinance, minimum size per unit, and fair housing laws that are affecting our community here in the Second and now in the Fourth Wards. There are very serious concerns about the 16-unit Howe project at the Coroner Dumpster and Pitner. We ask that you please review the residents' concerns, and please do not issue any permits unless and until all issues are resolved. We cannot understand how this project, or this 286-unit Albion project, ever passed through the DAPR committee. These projects will be affecting all residents in their communities, our quality of life, our home values, and the look and feel of our communities. Please do not destroy the character of the Second or the Fourth Ward with projects that don't fit in the area and don't meet the codes and ordinances that the city very carefully set up for all to follow. Why is it that we, the residents, need to be zoning analysts and research all codes and ordinances, and then have to plead our cases with you, the city council? I was very surprised to learn that Evanston has 28 active boards, commissions, and committees, and each report to a standing committee of the city council. Why then do we need to repeatedly ask for your zoning, your codes, and your ordinances to be followed by builders? Isn't that what your committees are set up for? Please do not allow the Albion or the Howe project to move forward as it's presented. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ray. Okay, Betty Esther. And Betty is our last speaker, I believe.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to tell you why you should not vote for the rezoning of 1829 Simpson from R3 to B1. If you vote on rezoning, then you have to approve the variance in order to make the building of a restaurant fit the lot. Doesn't make sense. There are other issues that have not been clearly addressed. The garbage, the service of food to customers on the patio, disposal of the grease, the smelling of the food from the neighbors, the upper unit, the 10 feet for the other height on the building, or even the 4.3 easement on the east. Is the benefit that is supposed to bring to the city outweigh the impact on the neighbor? We never did hear what the benefits from this restaurant would be to the community or to the city. This was changed, R3 was changed so that we would not have to be worried about spot zoning. At one while in the Fifth Ward, there was lots of spot zoning going on. We said that could make that area a more affordable housing unit, or add it to Twigs Park. So, you should vote tonight be no, because this project will fall in the area of spot zoning, and that is why the neighbors have fought each time it came up for a rezoning. So, please listen to those residents over there that pay property tax, that lives there, that have been there for over 20, 40 years, to keep it R3 what they asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. All right, that concludes public comment for this evening. We will now go on to the special orders of business. So, the first special order of business, SP1, is ordinance 112-0-17. You bet, you can give that to him, Ray. Updating the welcoming city ordinance. Is there any discussion? Alderman Wilson?
I would -- I guess we don't have a motion on the special order.
Oh, excuse -- yeah, excuse me. Let me do that first, and then we can start discussion. Is there a motion?
No approval.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Alderman Wilson.
In line with the comments, I looked at the language. I don't see any -- certainly don't see any harm in that, so I would propose that we amend the draft ordinance to include the language that says "signed by a judge." Is that right?
Signed by a judge.
In subsection D of the draft.
Do you want to make that an amendment to whoever--
So, yeah, I'm moving to amend that, to include that language.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Fleming?
I just wanted to do a public thank you to the committee. They did work very hard. They -- I'm sure emailed many of us, but because I'm Alejandra's neighbor, got to talk to her a lot, but they were right on top of what the Trust Act said, what our ordinance needed to say. Grant, I wanted to commend Mario. He was really excellent to work with, and really, I think, took their feelings into consideration in updating this, and he was very prompt. So, I'm happy to see us doing this. To address Ms. Decray, because I know that she and I have had this conversation, I do want us to be a welcoming city for all people. African Americans, we do have some work to do to feel totally -- or some, you know, to feel totally welcome here. I think we -- I'm still working to bridge that divide where it does exist. But this ordinance is necessary, because we are dealing with people who are undocumented, and we are dealing with an administration that has not been very friendly. So, I do want us to provide protection so they -- that they need legally, and I hope that the city -- we will continue to work with inclusion and making sure everyone who is here legally or not legally do feel welcome. So, I think we can do both of those things at one time.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fleming. It was just brought to my attention that, well, we have it for action. This is actually the first reading of this ordinance here at council, so we would need to--
Suspend the rules.
-- suspend the rules to adopt and approve tonight.
Make a motion.
All right, so, all right, so on the vote to amend, we have a motion and a second to that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the amendment passes.
Okay, so I move that we introduce and suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so--
Passes as amended.
And then, so I move that we -- I move that we adopt the ordinance.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, you're really not supposed to play that role if Don Wilson wants to do that, but you're not supposed to call for votes and things.
Okay, all right. So, Anne said I'm not supposed to ask if there is a motion.
No, no, you can ask, but I mean--
Okay, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey.
I'm moving that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
And I think it's the ordinance, so we have to call the roll, right?
All right, so we need to call the roll. Clerk Reed?
I think he still does that.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And then Alderman Fisk.
All right, so SP1, ordinance 112-0-17, passes nine to nothing. Okay, SP2. All right, thank you, everybody, for your support out there. SP2, authorization and budget allocation for hiring a special legal counsel for the city clerk. I'm going to ask the city clerk to go ahead and introduce this.
Yeah, well, so I am going to ask that Alderman Sufferton hold this until the next meeting, but I do want to, you know, make something clear. You know, when Barack Obama left office, he invited Donald Trump to the White House, and Obama engaged in a practice, in a standard practice in our modern democracy, and this was the peaceful transition of power. You know, I wasn't afforded that opportunity, but I want to make clear that this is not to inform me about my roles and duties as clerk. This is a disagreement that I have with our city manager and legal counsel as to who has the hiring and firing power in the clerk's office, you know, as was expressed to me today by my new deputy clerk. He -- because he believes that the city manager is his boss and not the elected clerk, he has concerns that he could potentially be fired for reasons that are potentially political. And so, I want clarification as to who has the hiring and firing authority in the clerk's office. That is what this is about. That is not to inform me of my duties in the clerk's office, to make that clear. So, if someone can hold that until the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I think the city council's rules allow an issue to be held only once, unless it's--
That is correct.
I know a special order has some impact on that council rule, and I'm just looking to see. Can you help me with this?
A hold can be done once, and it can only be done by a member of the corporate authorities, a member of the city council.
So, Mr. Corporation Council, I believe this has already been held once?
I believe so.
From the last meeting?
Yes.
So, under the council's rules, it could not be held again.
Okay, could we table it to a date certain? Yes, if you wanted to do an alternate motion to postpone to a date certain, and fix the date via the motion.
What's your date, clerk?
This -- well, I can tell them the date. The 16th.
I'd like to move to table this discussion, special order business, until October 16th.
Second.
All right, Alderman Suff-- All right, Alderman Sufferton?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we could have a more complete and informed discussion about this after the Rules Committee on the 16th. I was saying that I think we could have a more informed and complete discussion on the 16th, but you guys beat me to it, so 16th.
Okay, cool. Keep it moving. We got you, but next time.
Sorry, everybody.
Okay, we got you.
All right.
All right, so we had a motion to hold to a date certain, which is October 16th, that was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Shh, shh, it's okay, it's okay.
Alderman Braithwaite did?
Yeah.
It was seconded.
We're good.
We're good, okay. All right, let's move on to SP3, 2017, end of the year budget status. This is for action, to accept and place on file. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in your packet a staff's report. I think the major issue, a couple of major issues. One is that we are recommending to move forward with a furlough day for staff on Friday, November 10th. That is the federal holiday for Veterans Day, so individuals who work in this building, who work in Parks and Recreation Community Services, would, those facilities would be closed to the public, those employees would not report to work and would not be paid for that day. For employees that work in portions of our Public Works Department, in our Police and Fire Department, those individuals who are on shift would be dealt with an alternate plan, and would have one day of leave removed from their banks in order to accommodate that. Mr. Lyons's report, I think, details where we are at. Otherwise, we are projecting at this juncture that we will end the year in the positive, but just barely, and that is all detailed on page 33 of the packet, where we are now projecting an $85,000 surplus with the changes that have been made. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can go through this in more detail if the council would like, but we wanted to just report where we are at. We have, the budget for next year was released on Friday. Those discussions are scheduled to begin with the council next Monday.
Todd?
Okay, I move we accept and place on file.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, nine to nothing, this is placed on file, accepted. Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Alderman Braithwaite, can you take us through the consent agenda and then APW?
Take the minutes off.
Excuse me, the minutes, I mean.
Okay, I was just requested to remove M1.
Okay, that's removed.
Can, well, can we give a reason?
Uh, we'll, yeah, we'll discuss a reason when we, when we get to it.
Keep going. So we-
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to move item A1, payroll September 4th, 2017, through 20, excuse me, through September 17, in a dollar amount of $2,767, 523 and .41 cents. I'd also like to move item A2, bills list, October 10th, 2017, in a dollar amount of $4,548, 967 and 93 cents. They're both for action.
Okay, and I, and a second, I believe we can, we don't have an issue with Alderman Sufferton, right, on that, so we can continue to move through our, through it this week.
There's no Amazon.
No Amazon on the, on the bills list, so-
We don't, okay, I'll just-
Continue on Alderman Braithwaite.
I'd like to move item 3.1, it's a contract with Central Lakes Construction Company, Inc. for Fleetwood Jordan Center, the HVAC and electrical improvements, in the dollar amount of $1,988, $485, and that's coming from our capital improvement fund. I'd also like to move item A3.2, it's change order number two with Schroeder &amp; Schroeder, Inc., for the 27 alley and street improvement project, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $131, 880 and .25. That's for action. I'd also like to move the purchase of Trees Planting Services from Suburban Tree Consortium, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $54,367. That's for action. Item 3.4, which is the January 1 pension and fire, so I think we're just, there's a action item with this motion for our staff to explore, but we took care of this all in one motion, right, so we don't need to call it. Okay, thank you, thank you, Marty. So item 3.4, January 1, 2017, is police and fire pension actual report. Item 3.5, it's an agreement with Meniscus Code, Inc., to provide centralized cashier system, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $320,000. I'd also like to move item A3.6, it's a contract award with Groot Industries, Inc., for residential refuge collection, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $1,500, excuse me, the annual cost of $1,581,36. That's for action. Item 3.7, contract award with Lake Shore Recycling Systems for condo refuge collection, and that's going to be the unit price of $625, resulting in an annual cost of $423,000. That's for action. Item A3.8 is the contract award to Groot Industries for the residential yard waste collection. The annual cost on that is going to be $655, $134 and 10 cents. That's for action. There's also the solid waste fund analysis, so staff is recommending the city council continue the discussion on a suggestion, excuse me, suggested sanitation service charge amendments, and provide direction on how to proceed. And I think we went with option-
No, we can get a budget memo. No, we, yeah.
Two. Right.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Braithwaite, the committee recommended the staff, as part of the budget discussions, bring back that option.
Memo, in the memo format.
So there, I think, that was the general direction provided at this point.
With option two.
That's correct.
All right, thank you for that point of information. Pardon me? Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd also like to continue with item A4, resolution 76-R17, authorizing the city manager to enter into a two-year, one-half-month lease with Mudlock Theater Company for the Noise Street Theater.
Two and one half months?
Two and one half.
What did I say?
Two years.
Excuse me, it's late.
It's late.
Sorry, folks, thank you for the correction. A5, ordinance 96-0-17, amending the city code A-4-12 to establish a fee for recycling program for multifamily apartment buildings with six units or greater, and that fee would be $1.85 per month to be imposed starting January 1, 2019. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen, if you'd like to just take us through the Planning and Development Committee consent agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item P1, granting vacation rental license to 2120 Madison Place, was held in committee to be, with additional information to come at the next meeting, we urge the applicant and his neighbors to get together and understand each other's issues. Item P2, ordinance 88017, granting a special use for a type-two restaurant, Nick's Organic Fast Food, a drive-through, active ground floor use, and major zoning relief at 2628 Gross Point Road, was also held in committee with several questions being raised to the applicant about coming in with verifiable parking, extra parking parking with a verifiable parking lease. Item P3, ordinance 103017, special use permit for planned development located at 1450 to 1508 Sherman Avenue in the D4 Downtown Transition District, was also held in committee with a number of questions raised by the committee, so that will return to us at the next council meeting. P4, ordinance 99017, amending zoning map to rezone 1829 Simpson Street from R3 to family residential district to a B1 business district. I move approval.
Second.
And then ordinance 1017, granting special use permit and major variation for type-two restaurant at 1829 Simpson Street in the B1 Business District, is also for action tonight. I move approval on that.
Second.
And then P6, ordinance 93017, amending various sections of Title IV, Chapter 14, Design and Project Review. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance, which is related to voting and advisory members of the DAPR Committee.
Second.
This is for action, yes. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson, would you like to go through the Rules Committee?
Thank you. Item 01, ordinance 85017, creating Title II, Chapter 12 of the city code, forming an Equity and Empowerment Commission. I'd like to take that off the consent agenda.
All right, and thank you. And Alderman Revelle, would you take us through the appointments?
Sure. For appointment to the Climate Action and Resilience Plan Working Group, the following proposed members, Li Kuan Cheng, Jack Darren, Robert Dean, Joel Freeman, Jerry Garl, Vicki Jacobson, Emily Lawrence, Sarah Lovinger, Lauren Marquez Vissel, Gabriella Martin, John Moore, Mariana Oliver, Judy Pollak, Gayan Sinvandran, and Lonnie Wilson. And then I'd also like to mention, there's been a request to have someone, that the committee be expanded by one person, to include someone from officially representing the Environment Board. So I guess-
That goes to the Rules Committee?
Staff to go back to the Rules Committee.
Yes, it would. That's approved, the appointments.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll come back, we'll come back to that. Okay. So is there a motion to move the consent agenda seconded? Okay, city clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
All right, consent agenda passes nine to nothing. Okay, all right. Let's go to, the first thing that was removed from the consent agenda was the minutes, M1. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had one correction that I mentioned last time, but the correction didn't appear on that, is that I was at the September 6th city council meeting. I was late in arriving.
Correction noted, thank you.
Okay, we've got that noted. Alderman Wilson?
I was just going to move that the minutes be approved as amended.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have passed, nine to nothing. Okay, Alderman Wilson, the next thing, the other, the only other thing taken off the agenda was 01, the Equity and Empowerment Commission.
Okay, and thank you for that. And I'll just be completely honest, in the process of reviewing the hundreds of pages of other materials and the hours of other meeting recordings, et cetera, I did get a phone call and had a conversation with someone who had some questions and concerns about this. We also had a public speaker. I just simply didn't have a time, an opportunity to go through and review this as closely as I'd like to. I don't have any great concerns, but I would like to just hold this to the next meeting and-
Second.
And just kind of proof that over, make sure we've got what we're intending to do.
I agree.
All right, so 01 Equity and Empowerment Commission will be held in the next meeting.
What page is that on?
500. 501, 500.
Okay. All right, and then, in terms of, how do we properly handle, I just want to make sure this request that Alderman Revelle put forward, that we'd like to have a representative from the Environmental Board on the Climate Action and Resiliency Committee.
So as the Rules Chair, I've asked the city manager, add that to our Rules Committee agenda.
Just as a point of information, Alderman Wilson, why can't we vote on that now, just to add the, add the seat?
No, it's not been noticed.
It's not been noticed. We would have to have a document before you to amend the motion to create the body, so we'll do that for next week. You're meeting every Monday between, for a while.
That's fine, that works if it gets approved. I know they are hoping to get the Climate Action Working Group started the first week in November, so timing will still work. Okay, we'll move to call the wards. Alderman Braithwaite, do we start with, Alderman Braithwaite?
Can you come back to me? I have to find the date.
Sure, Alderman Nguyen?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I had my office hours last Thursday at Brothers Cave from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. I thank you to everyone who came. I want to just stress to people that those, I have those office hours the first Thursday of every month, and everyone is welcome. Then the next third Ward Town Hall meeting is Thursday, October 26th, at Lincoln School from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. All are welcome to join us at our new mural on Foster and Ashland. We will have an opportunity for all residents to participate in the installation with adding tile to the mural, so join us. It's on Saturday, this Saturday, 2:30 to 5:30 p.m.
Thank you. Alderman Sufferton?
I'd just like to thank the Fire Department for their open house yesterday. Very enjoyable time for everybody.
Terrific. Alderman Revelle? Alderman Rainey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did not receive minutes, city council meeting minutes, again, this, until this evening, from the September 25th council meeting, from our city clerk. I have been on this council since 1984, with the exception of four years, and the first time the council did not get minutes in all those years was the last time we did not get minutes, and this time. So it's been since September 25 until tonight. I wrote to the city clerk, I think, two times at least, maybe three times, asking to have a copy of those minutes. It is, to me, it is unconscionable that the one main duty that the city clerk has is to write those minutes and provide them to the council for review prior to the following council meeting. I received tonight this transmission from the city clerk, attached to the council minutes from October 25, which he means September 25. According to the Open Meetings Act, and he quotes a statute, "A public body shall approve the minutes of its open meeting within 30 days after that meeting, or the public body's second subsequent regular meeting, whichever is later." So I'm responding, saying, you know, what you're telling me is that the public body has 30 days to approve the minutes. It nowhere says that the clerk has 30 days to provide us with the minutes. I, I am asking this council to support me in that this city clerk needs to perform the duties that every other city clerk has performed in the last, at least, 34 years, and provide this council, prior to the next meeting, the minutes from tonight's meeting, going forward, every single council meeting, we get the minutes after the last meeting. It is, it is the only job the city clerk has a deadline to perform. The city clerk no longer has passports, the city clerk no longer has transfer stamps, the city clerk, I don't know what the heck the city clerk does, but the city clerk has no reason not to perform the writing of the minutes and to provide them to us. I just cannot imagine all of you being satisfied with not getting the minutes since September 25.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming?
I would like to, I forgot to do this last time, thank the, our Evanston Fire Department and Skokie Fire Department for having the Evanston Ops experience. I thought I was going to suffocate with the mask, but they were very good paramedics, and I did not suffocate, but it was, it was great for me to see exactly what they do, and I realized that I would be a horrible fireman, so I want to appreciate them publicly for all the hard work they do. Also, Alderman Rainey and I will be having a joint ward meeting this Thursday, 7:00 at Levy Center. We, our CFO, Marty Lyons, will be coming to go over the budget with us, so I am going to implore 8th and 9th Ward residents to come out, because as you have heard, we have a budget shortfall, and it's important that you all are paying attention now and lending your voice before we make some final decisions. So 7:00, Levy Center?
Bring your tax bill.
All right, Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite?
Uh, thank you, members, I'd also like to echo Alderman Fleming's remarks regarding the, uh, fireman training, it was a great experience, um, learning just how physical a demand that, the, you know, the responsibility is. Um, I also want to thank, uh, the residents who came out this past weekend, along with the Evanston Police Department staff, special, uh, shout-out to Anjali Daily, uh, I, I try to commit to this activity every year, and it's a walk a mile in her shoes, uh, that benefits Northwest Casa, um, the, the event is, is, uh, geared around, uh, sexual violence prevention against women, uh, it's a really eye-opening event, and from the moment that I put my feet in the shoes, it just reminds me, uh, just how difficult it is, but, more importantly than the pain and suffering with wearing shoes for 20 minutes that women wear all day, is the awareness and the statistics around, uh, the, the violent crimes, so I just thank them, thank Anjali, uh, and, uh, great event. Uh, and then this Thursday, October 20th, uh, our second ward, uh, meeting will be rescheduled to next month, thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Uh, we are not going to, uh, go into executive session tonight, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Anyone wanna stay here? All right, this meeting's adjourned.